Yeah.
Here?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, Alan's gone.
Sheila and Alan on the other side.
Oh, alrighty.
Oh. Well, I guess I'm... I'll make Sheila sit over here. I'll sit in the middle tonight. Oh. Yeah, keep people at home, you know, see if they're paying attention. How you doing, Doug?
Good, yourself?
Well, I'm here.
Hey, it's fun though.
That's right. It's a nice day.
We got three. That's... we're working on it.
How you doing, Pat?
I'm good, as usual.
Yeah, I'm here. Again.
Again.
Think I should have had two cups of coffee before I came here, Barbara.
Yes, the agenda didn't look too bad.
No, no, we just have a little hashing out, though, between us.
Yes, 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 we do.
Won't be the first time there was a disagreement.
Nah. I'm just hoping we make a quorum. Things are looking pretty skinny here at five o'clock.
Yeah, I saw a couple of people said they weren't coming.
Kai, I know Kai's...
Yeah, Kai has a showing tonight. I had...
Yeah.
Dust duty today.
And I don't know who else, but...
Um... Who else?
Pigs comes dawn, so that's good.
Yeah. I saw Michelle the other day. She didn't say if she was coming or not.
But she has to come down from Boston, so I'm from Portland, so she usually comes in right under the wire. Hi, Dawn. You made it.
I made it.
Did you go home first, or did you come right here?
I went home. I worked through lunch, so I can leave.
Get the...
Take care of the dog. That's right.
Dawn, did I see you walking the dogs on my way home from my office about an hour ago? I thought I saw you up on, um, by Dick McCabe's house, walking the dogs.
Yeah, I live on Briarwood.
Briarwood.
Which is, it's right off.
Yeah, all of those, yeah, I know which.
Magnolia.
By Magnolia, yeah, up in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I used to have friends who lived there when I was in high school, the Dartiers. I think these may still live there.
Who was it?
The Dartiers. There was Greg and Gary, and they had a younger brother. They lived out back there somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. They're also... so Magnolia kinda goes up and around.
Yep.
And then Briarwood goes... Briarwood dead ends, but like...
That's the last one, isn't it, before Washington Court?
That's right, yep.
Yes.
And then Primrose goes off from it, and you can connect Primrose and Magnolia, but it's like...
Yeah, I think I...
Rock really rose.
I think I did that once in high school, and we won't talk about the circumstances.
I don't... I think it's kinda like those neighbors don't really agree on whether or not it should be a thruway.
Hi Sheila. Sure. We thought we'd play musical chairs tonight, keep the audience...
Just makes me crazy when you do that.
Oh, stop. You can be the chairman, chairwoman, or whatever the...
We love the law.
I thought it was funny, Alan, did I tell you that Alan kept teasing me about, uh, I should get up for more months, you be the chairman, he goes, "Oh." As if he wasn't gonna do it. No, no, he was just teasing me. So I told Laurie about it, and I said, "Well, you know, if I had to, I said, I'd do it another year." And then two days later, he sent out texts saying he wanted to do it. I was like, "Okay."
Yeah, and he sent it out while Molly was sunning down in eighty degrees.
Maybe he had too much to drink and too much sun and sent it out.
That could be.
So we usually, most of the time, we'll let it go down by the noon.
I think that's all fine, but I'm not gonna read it. We're not here to promote other people's business. I'll just say that we had something that may be entered into the public record. I'm not here to promote, you know, advertise.
So it's just a piece of law?
Yes. I believe so. Actually, I guess one's mine and yours. Is this six...
This is Ocean Woods.
Oh, okay. We gotta turn this in at the end of the night.
Anyway.
It's all good. They've already signed off on this, so...
Now we can turn these in tonight.
Yeah, well, they made me keep mine last year.
Really?
Yeah, I still have it.
Yeah.
Jen's like, "You might need it." Oh, I have a question, Laurie. He's, um...
I had to drive.
Why didn't you call me? I would've come got you.
Wayne's been at the Beverly all day. I don't know what he's doing.
Uh, I noticed just something that may or may not be correct on, uh...
He's gone for another two weeks.
Yeah.
What's your call? It's, uh...
Or a week and a half, anyway.
The road agreement there, Wallace Woods Ten. It lists me as the chairman of the board, which is correct today, but by the time this passes, I'm kinda hoping Alan will be the chairman of the board. Or is this going to affect the day that we vote on it, on that Tuesday? Because I'll still be the chairman then. I don't know if that's an issue or not.
Friends of the town have a school. What we're doing, we're having an auction.
I don't think it matters for tonight, but... Because there's one part here where I have to sign alone as the chairman, or I should say, the chairman has to sign. No, there's one...
Can we keep going here?
Oh, yes, then I personally, me, chairman of the... Okay, so...
Yeah, you better believe it.
It doesn't matter if you just pause it. I know how we like legal. Ah, I can't complain. And I suppose officially, we don't know who the chair is, even though we do know who the chair's gonna be, whether he wants to be or not, right?
Yeah, of course.
Maybe I do, so I can... I read through that. That's this one. Oh, please. Yes, because I could not open mine. They will.
Little cat. Good to see you again.
We're not... I'm not reading that.
It's the coolest thing I have ever seen in my life.
BS. We'll just leave the O right out of it. Okay, uh, other than... Other than... No, me either. Even though I thought it was a good idea the first time I... my statement. It is, but it... and as I thought about it, so is everybody. Yeah, that's right.
And especially this year, we were...
Yeah, we're already adding thirty-some odd cents just to buy... Yes.
Never. And that's a good... but look, one goes one way.
Is it different?
There's no control there.
I'd still get out... I'd still get out today and pay the damn bond and get the hell out of there.
Wayne's wears its raccoon, but these things are... these are poles like this, and they're bent right to the ground. And I said, "How did the raccoon, you know, come top?" Because we got the...
If we got out, on tour, they would eat.
It's the second thing.
A wonderful...
Took them out last fall.
Yuki.
Just come out because they can sell where they have it.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're just out of the...
Did a tour. Whatever. And, you know, we were discussing the path that I'm carrying.
Not when I'm walking the dog at ten o'clock. I'm looking like this, you know, each way.
Right. Don't say you're gonna send...
Yeah.
Don't say...
Mine is highlighted in yellow.
They got a great school system.
This one's in yellow.
Oh, I wouldn't send it. I think it's just too far, though.
She doesn't need yellow.
I would...
I did wear mine last... Eight months ago, I started.
If this tuition helps, then they'd have to take...
Made it a good long time. I made it a good long time.
We'd at least get what we paid for. We might pay more per person.
Forty-seven. Doing all right.
There's gonna come a day where we won't need schools, so we won't have to be part of...
It does make up a deal, though.
Unfortunately, believe...
I tried to read like a vitamin bottle or something, and I was like...
Oh, yeah, I looked... somebody said that to me. I looked it up.
Problem. Real problem. She's got glasses all over the place.
Laura, Laura, somebody who might even reach real tea was the other agent, because now it shows up on the MLS as to who the... Person on the other side is, as opposed to we... Because I was thinking, "Ah, he sold it to himself some other way that..." I'm thinking, "Maybe not, because he would've probably just used Vicky and do it." I only wanted four million. You know, he takes three and a half, so...
I have commitments.
I don't know. That's quite the house he built across from his other property tomorrow.
He's still with him?
Oh, my God. The two of them. It's a one-two.
Two and a half million for that house now. That thing is very obliterated anyway. Head straight out.
I bet... I bet she was so pleased.
Oh, well, that's the same designer that did Dick Smith's house up on...
Still am.
Stonehaven, above the Elks. It's nice inside, though. Side of one side, the other. Here somewhere?
Right in front of your book?
Yeah, well, I'm going with book. I feel like I'm in the old...
Oh, you know, I didn't even bring that one.
The NASA landing there, where they picked up all the technical data in books. All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to a joint meeting of the Budget Board and the Kennybunk Board of Selectmen here April 11th at, uh, 6:05 PM. So I call the Board of Selectmen to order.
And I will call the Budget Board to order. We're lacking one for a quorum.
Okay. All right, so the first, um...
So, so they don't have a quorum? We have, we have two, four, six. Twelve, we need seven, don't we? Yeah.
Oh, it's Michelle.
Yay!
You'll have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
Yes. At least you will in a minute. All right, so, uh, tonight on our agenda is to review the town meeting warrant and vote on the warrant articles.
Yep, the first, um, the first item, though, was number two, to review the budget recommendations.
Got ahead of myself here, yes.
So you'll see, under item two, you should have the, um, budget with the totals and the Budget Board recommendations and the Selectmen recommendations. And so traditionally, after the Budget Board votes and the Selectmen vote, um, we just review any differences in the recommendations.
Okay, well... Uh, according to this ledger here, we agreed on everything except for Kems' budget. The Board of Selectmen voted for $155,000, and the Budget Board voted for $175,000. So we have a $20,000 discrepancy between our two boards. Do I have any discuss...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dan.
Jim Stockman. There he is, he's walking in the door. He has financial information, and I would like to have him speak, if that is permissible.
By all means. You're up, Jim. Welcome to the meeting.
For anybody who isn't aware, Jim is the president of Board of Directors of Kems, and has been there for a long time in the board.
Thank you. It is my understanding that, uh, the Budget Board Selectmen wanted to know the size of the Kems endowment. At this particular point, March 31st, the unrestricted funds were $1,377,888.79, and the restricted fund was $233,259.86, for a total endowment of $1,611,147.80. The other question I was told that came up was, "How is the subscription service doing?" We to date have just under $24,000. We have about 90 people enrolled. The reason I'm saying about is that more keep coming in every day.
Very good.
We have done statistics. Sixty percent of those subscribing were previous donors, and obviously forty percent are new people who have never donated to us, at least last year. They could've been previous years. Our fund drive to date is around $40,000. That's from July 1st, 2018, to March 31st, 2019. Gifts and donations, July 1st, again through March 31st, 2019, has been $15,675. Somebody wanted to, uh, know what we were planning in the future. We, uh, I can tell you that as of January 1st, 2020, drivers' pay will go up to $12 an hour mandated by the state, and our EMTs will go up $2 more to $14. We will have some kind of increase in insurance costs. We are entering into negotiations with our insurance company. We do not know the impact of that cost in terms of workman's comp and all insurance, but it will be in place by July 1, the beginning of our fiscal year. It is also our intention in July 2021 to purchase a new ambulance completely out of our endowment, and we're budgeting $250,000. This ambulance would be fully equipped, so that we're not just going to strip down the old ambulance, but we want to get it with all up-to-gate, uh, all up-to-date equipment. I think that unless people have questions, I hope this answered outstanding issues.
Uh, the only question I have myself is, uh, can you explain the difference between your restricted and your unrestricted endowment? Just for, you know, those listening at home and those in the audience?
When mon... when monies are donated to any organization, many times, there will be restrictions of what that money can be used for. This $233,000 was from a person, Emily Brown. I don't have the complete knowledge of all of the restrictions that... But it could be used for this, this, or this, but couldn't be used for this or this. Others say you're allowed to use that money for operation, or you could, maybe there was, somebody wanted to donate and have it specifically go to a new ambulance. So that would be the difference between the restricted and the unrestricted.
Okay.
One other thing, could you share with us, or them, everyone, what your anticipated drawdown is from the endowment this year to finish up the budget?
We really do not know what that drawdown will be. We have, uh, we are meeting with our new financial advisors next month. We'll have a better idea of their plan, of how they're going to manage our fund to be able to afford the ambulance. Traditionally, we have been taking about $18,000 out of our endowment a year, and it's been transfer of funds from the endowment into our operation checking account for, uh, our expenses. When we get to the end of our fiscal year, and we have a shortfall, and the treasurer says, "I need money to pay the payroll," we will then go in and dip into our endowment to cover that cost. We have so many variables that we deal with. We could get a check, hopefully, to donation and not have a problem. We could, all of a sudden, we're hoping to have an increase in the subscriptions, maybe by, uh, uh, May, June, when some of the summer people come up and they see that hundred dollar per person to be able to have that coverage that we offer to everybody in the calendar year. So there's a lot of variables. We could take a hit on our endowment of 30, 35, 40,000 dollars. We just don't know. The other variable that we have is that our revenue from services is down. We just did a study of the whole forty, uh, the whole forty years, and the curve goes up and then it starts to go up and down in terms of number of runs. We've never really been over 500 runs. We could. And so if all of a sudden, we... people need the ambulance, we would be able to tap into an additional revenue for services. So I'm not sure I can specifically answer it. I hope that that gives everybody an idea of the variables that we deal with on a daily basis.
David, you have a question?
Yeah, uh, Jim, Dave James, I had three questions originally that I didn't think were answered by what was presented originally. One was the subscriptions, and at the time you presented the budget, you said 20,000, and now you're saying you're up to 24,000, which is good. It's moving up. You also had said 40,000 you estimated for gifts and donations. Are you still sticking with the 40,000, or are you expecting... I mean, the year is only far away from on.
The donations we do from July 1 to June 31st. So the year, we're at the end of our donation year. We're getting ready to put together new letters to go out for July 1 for our new fund drive. Again, wanted to be conservative. I don't know what's in the mailbox today in terms of new donations coming in, but I don't expect traditionally that that number is gonna go that much higher. Again, having, in our fortieth, I've done surveys at least back seven years. I know how the donations have come in, as low as $26,000, as high as 50. It's been that variable. But when you look at the percent of that donated money to our operating cost, it's maybe 10%. We might even hit 12% this year, or 15%. We just don't know, until our auditors go through the books and, and tell us exactly what the percent was in relationship to our expenditures.
Okay, my third question was relative, relative to the withdrawal from the endowment. You were estimating $43,520 to withdraw. And my question was, is that reducing the principal, or are you mainly drawing on the interest that has been earned upon the endowment investments? Is the principal remaining the same, and you're withdrawing the principal, the interest?
I don't have the knowledge at this time to answer the question, because we're changing financial advisors, and I will have a better idea of how they're approaching it once they come up with their proposal for our investment policy, which is, uh, the one that we were previously working off of was something like a 65% for stocks and the rest of it in bonds and cash. I just don't know that answer at this time. We hope we're not going into the principal.
Okay, good, thanks.
Anybody else?
Jim? What percentage of the people that, of the calls that Kems receives actually are billable and we actually, or Kems actually gets paid for?
Twenty-five seventy-five. And I've been, again, going back through the records, and back in 1986, there was a statement that said, 75% of our calls are billable, 25% are not. And people back then were trying to figure out, based on that formula, how to fund, back then, which was a volunteer organization, how to keep the thing rolling. So 75/25, and it's quite consistent. Might be a couple of points off.
And what's the current payroll this year, roughly, for drivers, EMTs, medics?
I'm sorry, it's the one number I didn't put together to be able to...
Roughly.
Uh, I'm sorry, I just don't have that in my head. I would have to, uh, I have it here. I could probably look. Just give me one second to look for it. I think I have it here. In, in 2017, 18, salaries and wages were $271,960. In 2018, 19, they're $317,760. And those represent 75% of our total operating budget in this new fiscal year that we're coming for. That's going to go up to 81%, because that number will go up from there. So that is, that is everything. That's salaries, wages, to man that station 24/7, and we've been really doing a great job of 99.7% in terms of, of having somebody there ready to go with that ambulance, paramedic, EMT, or a driver. We're very proud of that.
So, so roughly half of the cost of personnel is what Kems is asking the town to help pay?
Yes, that is, that is correct, to fund half of our payroll. And, and I came up with that with the board and with other people. It was the simplest method of coming up with a number to, um, not to just come and say, "Well, we would like X amount of dollars." It was something that was concrete. Fifty percent of our payroll, that would be how we could deal with.
Jill, I have a question for you, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
It goes more towards process. Um, I, I don't think there's a soul in the room who doesn't think Kems is just an extraordinary organization and probably deserves many times the amount of money that it's gonna get. But in terms of this process, when you first pitched your budget, um, you know, obviously there was a lot of pencil sharpening and number crunching and things that were done, and then it wound up in the hands of the town manager, okay, and that's what came back before the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Board initially, after much meeting, I'm sure, between you and others from Kems and the town manager. Budgets, as you know, it's, it's always a hard thing, and things get whittled down, and, and numbers wind up sometimes in a slightly different place than they started. When you initially pitched, and when this came for us the first time around, it was... When you initially pitched, and when this came for us the first time around, it was at that 155 number, which was a 3.3% increase over previous. And then, for some reason, it was pitched to grow $20,000 in the meeting that night. Was there a basis for that? Or is it, you know, one of the things that concerns me is that Kems is one of those, an organization that it would be so easy to throw feel-good money at it because you know it can always use more than it's getting. But you also have other departments in town that are similar in that when the town manager sits to go through the budget, you know, she sharpens her pencil and she brings things down. There's a certain amount of increase that should happen to get things done in a way that should be, but, you know, you just can't do it sometimes. So how did that 20 happen? From the time that the budget was pitched, published, and put in our book, and, you know, we sat here to vote on it, and we went from 155 to 175 in the request? That's kind of where I'm stumped. I know that, Dan, you proposed the increase, but I imagine that there must have been something behind it rather than just, you know.
That was the original request from Kems to the town manager.
I see.
175.
175.
I see. And so through the course of the process of arriving at that 155, did you guys all arrive and land at that as the answer when it appeared in the book?
The, the.
Let me, let me tell you where I'm going. I get uncomfortable when big changes like that, after everyone's kind of agreed and put the thing in this format and presented it to us and pitched it, and we've arrived at, you know, the end number and the commitments and the plan and how everything's going to shake out. While 20 doesn't sound like a lot, it, you know, it's a substantial difference in departure from where we all entered the room, and so I'm just curious about that.
Just emphasize the fact still that the amount goes from 3.3% increase to a 17% increase. So it's a big jump in percentage increases.
And I agree with you, David, and I agree absolutely, Stuart. I could not have said it better myself. This isn't about whether, you know, whatever happens here, about whether Kems deserves the money. Of course they do. Of course, so does the fire department, the police department, all the departments that we're funding. And when we start singling out individual departments in this manner, and some of you may have agreed that I thought this was a good idea at first, and again, I think Kems is a great organization, but when I sat down and I thought a lot about it, I figured that I was, you know, setting myself and this board up for a slippery slope of agreeing to it, you know, on the, on the fly on the evening that it was proposed. You know, again, I think it's a wonderful organization, but I don't see how I can support, you know, singling out one organization and giving them a 17% increase when everybody else had to, you know, get out their pencils. While most got an increase, it wasn't, certainly it wasn't that much.
And it wasn't what they requested, you know. The, the other departments came, came in and sat and did the, you know, they went through the same exercise and pitched their requests and, and, you know, came away, in some instances, with a lot less and in some others with a little bit less. And, you know, that's kind of where I, where I struggled with it personally. I'm not speaking for any other member of the board. And frankly, initially, you know, I'm all for giving Kems more money under, under most circumstances, but it has to make sense, and I didn't understand why, when everything was agreed to, then all of a sudden we, you know, went full stop the other way.
Unless there's any other discussion, I mean, because we can certainly banter this back and forth all night, you know, I'd like, is there a motion on this side for a vote?
We don't need to.
We don't need to vote this evening? Don't we have to, aren't we here for reconciliation?
Well, where we are, there are, you know, two different recommendations on Kems. And so certainly if the, either, either the Budget Board or the Selectmen want to reconsider their vote, that would be the time to do it now.
I'm good with, I'm good with what we did.
Okay. You all set?
I'm set.
Okay. I think Stu and I have made our opinions now.
So that's four, zero?
Four, zero, yes. I mean, it's not a, it's not a vote, but it's, if you want to call it straw poll, David.
Does anyone want to make a motion to revisit the article, Article number 20 for the Kems?
I'm not sure how to go about this, but we had voted.
We have voted.
Seven.
Seven, four.
Four.
There were 11 of us. Tonight there are seven.
What do we do if we want to reconsider that? How do we go about 20?
Someone who has voted.
In the affirmative.
In the affirmative must raise the motion. They voted against it? Does anyone? No? Hearing none. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for your consideration. I guess we can move on now to number three.
So I'm going to call Tracy O'Rourke, our town clerk, up, and everybody should have a copy of the warrant. And Tracy is going to lead us through the votes on both the Budget Board that she needs and the Selectmen.
Yes. Hello again. So we have a few items that weren't initially voted on. They don't have actual dollar amounts associated with them, so we need to get votes on those. And the first one would be Article 2, and that one I just need a vote from the Selectmen.
Move to adopt Article 2.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay. And then, Article 3?
I would move to adopt Article 3 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
And Article 4?
I would move to adopt Article 4 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
And Article 5?
I would move to adopt Article 5 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
And Article 6, I'll need a vote from both the Selectmen and the Budget Board.
I would move from the Board of Selectmen to approve Article 6 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Budget Board, do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Seven, zero.
Thank you. And Article 7 will just be the Selectmen?
I would move Article 7 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
And Article 8?
I move Article 8 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Article 9?
I move Article 9 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
And Article 10?
I move Article 10 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. And then we're going to.
And just, just to stop for a minute, Article 10 for the audience is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to go into a maintenance agreement with Reed Lane.
And then we're going to skip back to the end to Article 41, and I will need a vote from both Selectmen and Budget Board.
I'm sorry, what article did you say?
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Yes, we jumped way ahead.
All right.
For the Board of Selectmen, I would move that we would accept Article 41 as written.
Second.
All in favor? Approved.
Budget Board, motion please for the sum of $2,777,800 estimated non-property tax revenues.
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor? Seven, zero.
All right. And then Article 42?
On Article 42, I move that we accept Article 42 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Article 42, motion please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Seven, zero.
And then finally, Article 43?
I would move Article 43 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Article 43, motion please.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, none. All in favor?
Great.
Seven, zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Barbara, I think that your job and your committee's is done this evening. If you would like to adjourn. Do you have anything else?
I hear no, oh, wait a minute, I do hear a motion.
You do? Yeah. Stuart will make you a motion.
I will help if you like. I'm good at it.
I have no second?
That's one of my favorite motions ever.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Oh, wait a minute. David's got a question.
There's always one.
Yeah.
Looking at the commitment change, the municipal appropriations, is that including the 155 or the 175 for Kems?
There are two commitments.
So the one I gave you and sent you includes the Budget Board recommendation, as that was the highest amount.
So, okay.
On the top of your sheet, it should say 20 BB.
I printed this one out.
Okay. Gotcha.
Now, you have the latest one. Okay.
All right.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment? Seven, nothing.
Thank you very much for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.
We'll see you all in June.
If not sooner.
If not sooner.
The Selectmen are still going to review the maintenance agreement if you want to stay.
Okay.
But I just wanted to tell you it was on the warrant.
Good night, good night.
We don't have old ghosts this way.
All right. Are we ready to resume our business?
Yep.
Okay. Let's approve the March 21st Board of Selectmen's meetings.
Let's see, that's for, I'm just getting to that.
Everybody was at all of these meetings.
Yep, so moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Approve the 26th and the 27th. We'll take them together because those were our village parcel interviews.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Hand to approve the March 28, 2019 Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you much. Number five, this is the public forum. It's an opportunity for anyone who wishes to address the Board of Selectmen with any issue that's not on the agenda this evening. Seeing none. Number six, consider a new liquor license, excuse me, a renewal liquor license submitted by RL Restaurant LLC, DBA Salt and Honey, 24 Ocean Ave.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Consider a renewal liquor license submitted by OWR LLC Kathleen Spang, DBA Ocean Woods Resort, PJ's Pub and Dining, 71 Dyke Road.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Enforce said same, consider a special amusement permit.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
And staff have recommended approval.
Yes. Okay. Number nine, we had a dock side, a dock walk the other day where we were asked to go down as the Board of Selectmen and make sure that the town's interests were being upheld and not infringed upon. Somebody wants to put a dock in on 22 Ebbs Cove Road. I don't believe there was any issue with that. Does anybody have anything to say?
No, just that we looked at it and, you know, the topics that were brought up for conversation were the height of the dock and how it might be visible from neighboring and abutting properties. So that was an issue raised and kind of referred to the planning board for their piece of this process, as well as the distance of the float from the channel, again, which was determined on site to be satisfactory, but again, referred to the planning board for their consideration and deliberation as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Stu. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, on to the planning board. Okay, number 10, that's the moment you're all here for this evening. Consider road maintenance agreement for Wallace Woods. I read it, and the only thing I found wrong with it was it lists me as the chairman of the board, and I may not be the chairman. I don't plan on being the chairman of the board on the day this needs to be signed, but Laurie says that she will talk to our attorney about that and just clear up the paperwork, but other than that, I don't think that there's, anybody have any?
No.
I think we, you got, and I, again, I want to thank the residents of Wallace Woods for their patience, their understanding. This has not been a cut-and-dried process, but, you know, we certainly appreciate your goodwill, even though the first time you came here, you didn't hear something you wanted to. And, you know, that's, says a lot on your part, and, you know, we had agreed because of certain circumstances to bring this forth, and I think that now it's in the hands of the voters, so, you know, good luck.
Thank you.
You know, thank you to the Selectmen, Laurie, for all your support. It's been, it's been quite an interesting journey, but we appreciate that you've stuck with it and you've been supportive, so thank you.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, David.
On our occasion, you are approving it with through the review or what?
The, the motion I think you're looking for, Laurie, is for us to authorize you to enter into this agreement pending further review.
Well, I would, you would just approve it for the warrant?
Yes.
So this is what will be attached to the warrant for the voters to understand this is what they'll be voting on?
So moved.
And then if the voters approve it, we'll bring it back to you to sign.
Yes. Yeah. That's just a technicality, David, basically, but we know how lawyers are, and we don't want any unforeseen.
I know, but you know, I'm not a lawyer.
No, no, me either. And I don't even play one on TV. I hear a motion. Did I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Find my agenda here. Number 11, consider proposed revenue increases for FY 2020. This has to do with code enforcement, raising some of the fees. I think we have discussed this before, but if anybody.
So we're going to slow your meeting down and bring Warner up.
Hopefully not too slow.
I was lying, yeah.
Warner?
Good evening. So I trust that you all have a copy of the memo that I prepared along with the strikeout and new line format.
Oh, you remember, supposed to read it?
Of the fee schedule. Well, that's entirely up to you. So I just, I gave a bit of an explanation of what, what the changes are as they relate to fee changes. You'll, you'll note that the, some of these are clarifications on fees and some of these are, are actual increases, modifications. I would say the biggest in terms of an increase would be the residential new construction to raise that to a estimated project cost proposal at $10 per thousand, as we've discussed in the budget proposal. The other notable changes are, you know, as I said in the memo, primarily clarifications, you know, clarifications on shore, shorelands and landscape, hardscape projects. Again, oftentimes we wind up with projects that are just as complicated and take just as much time sometimes as more complex single-family homes, and so we felt that appropriate to have the fees reflect other complexity there. Also, standby generators, you know, there's been fluctuation in terms of how those have been, how those have been permitted, and so we just set, we're just doing the flat minimum permit fee on those. Docks and piers likewise as well, we tied those in, in the same way that we would residential cost per square foot, so.
So we're recommending, this was part of the budget proposal, and we are recommending that these would go into effect on May 1st.
I would move to accept Warner's recommendation or the town manager's recommendation. Either one.
And I think I'm going to sit back. I wasn't happy with the, some of the increases. Remember, we had this discussion.
Okay.
I will second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Three to one, Arlene. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warner.
Thanks, Warner.
Okay.
So also in the fee increases, there were license fee increases. You have a sheet in there, so it includes liquor license would go from $100 to $150. Visitor license would go from 50 to 100. Special amusement goes from 50 to 100. The trolley permit goes from 25 to 50, and the horse-drawn carriage permit would go 25 to 50.
It's been a while since we raised this. I know when we talked about this, you know, that, that was the, one of the issues, and Sheila, I remember you favoring a more graduated approach.
Right.
Is kind of where we landed on that.
Perhaps in the future we.
Well, if we do it more regularly.
Exactly.
You know, little bits more regularly.
Absolutely.
And that was one of the things we decided years ago, too, on some of the other fees that we have, you know, when you go for such a long time without it, you know, you try to correct it.
Well, I, I mean, I'm preaching to the choir here, but when you look at how far up the, or down the scale from fees where we were compared to our neighbors, this is long overdue to, to a certain degree.
Right.
You know, and I, and I appreciate your comments on that, Sheila, because it is a big increase, but.
Yeah, I think moving forward to, to speak to Sheila's concerns that we just need to be better about doing it more regularly, smaller amounts, so that it's never as big.
Start. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Moving on, authorize the town manager to sign the.
So are we voting on those license fees?
I thought we already did.
We did.
You did on the planning board, but you didn't on the license.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Do I have a motion?
That I will second.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous.
That's not too bad.
All right. So, number twelve, for the third time, authorize the town manager to sign the Animal Welfare Society contract. I just need to vote for that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
It's a great organization.
Okay. This one, number thirteen, is a little near and dear to me. Consider authorizing work zone, the work on Cape Orpuss Harbor dredge to be twenty-four, seven, and the project will take place between November first and March thirtieth, starting this year in twenty nineteen and continuing to twenty twenty. And for anybody wondering why those dates, those are the dates that the Army Corps of Engineers set forth for dredging. No dredging can take place outside of those dates. And the reason that we're asking for twenty-four, seven is not necessarily that it will increase the likelihood that they finish early, or even that they will complete the process, but it will allow more contractors to bid on it. That, that was the explanation. Now, I personally think if you're going twenty-four, seven, that increases your likelihood that you will be able to complete the project on time.
I would say.
But, you know, is there any discuss, I've, I've said my piece on this. Is there any discussion?
My comment only is that it's a working harbor. It, it's a harbor that's used by our lobstermen. And in order for them to continue with what they're doing and other, of course, fishing boats, that is something that we need to do.
Yes.
As quickly as possible.
As quickly as possible. And, you know, I think, think of it as a necessity for, for our lobstermen and our, for our fishermen, that one winter is-
Right.
Not too bad.
No, and we need to get it done because we all have to leave. When I say we, those of us who lobster out at Cape Orpuss, all the moorings, Army Corps said, have to be out before the dredge. So we're scrambling to make other arrangements to keep our boats for, for that time. But it's a sacrifice that we're all happy to make. The last dredge was, I was just a little kid. I used to sit out on the wharf of my grandfather in the early seventies and watch him dredge at night. Back then, they could dredge whenever they wanted to. So that, that dredge has lasted over forty-five years. And it was definitely money well spent. And to that end, we aren't paying for it. The, the federal, I mean, we're paying for it because it's the federal government and we pay. But as a municipality, this will not cost us anything above and beyond.
Right.
We're very fortunate because many, many people said this wasn't going to happen. And, you know, through our, the dedication of our town manager and some other very dedicated people that we have, working for the town and, and at Army Corps, and especially to Senator King and Senator Collins's office, they have been there with us all along. And I just can't tell you how huge this is because I don't know how many times I've been told they'll never dredge Cape Orpuss Harbor again. So I'd like to say a special thanks to everybody who put in the effort.
Bravo.
For sure. So, back to the matter at hand. Can I have authorization to dredge twenty-four, seven?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, number fourteen, we're going to buy a brush truck tonight. This is brought up from, Jay, would you like to speak to this? We addressed this last year. I won't steal your thunder, Jay.
That's funny.
It's just that they couldn't, I don't think they could provide us with the truck that we wanted at that time. Is that correct?
Yeah, the dealers, both Ford and, and GM stopped making what we were looking for. They weren't taking any new orders. And none of the dealers that had the trucks wanted to cough them up at the government type bid pricing. So we weren't able to get it. I talked around a little bit and decided that, that now would be a time where we could do it. It was basically a year ago because the bid went out just prior to my starting. So we got, we had, we sent out twelve, we sent the bid packages to twelve dealerships. We got two back. They're both Fords, thirty-one, four, twenty-six, twenty-two, and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred. To my recommendation, we go with the low bid from Row Ford of thirty-one, four, twenty-six, twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
You bought a truck. Now, according to the paperwork, it says you're going to have to wait eleven to fourteen weeks to get it, but-
Well, I have to work on, I, I have to work on the, the skid tank unit that's going to go in the back of it. And that'll, that's a separate bid on its own, and we're going to be doing that.
Okay, so you're not, you're not going to use the one that was in the old truck?
No, that was all homemade. And these days, you really can't do that anymore because of the weight restrictions and all that. So this is designed to go in this vehicle with a size tank that it can handle it and-
You can probably get the money to pay for that, selling the old brush truck.
Well, that's, it's my understanding that that truck would be the companies to dispose of.
Okay, very well.
It, it's a thirty-five years old with six thousand, less than six thousand miles on it.
Thank you, Jay. Oh, Jay, congratulations from your retirement-
Thank you. Appreciate it.
From the full-time fire department. Okay, accept the following donations, my favorite part, from Lucille and Roger Seavey donated a hundred dollars to the nurses' fees account in memory of Elaine Dubey.
Ellen Dubey.
Ellen Dubey, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
There's a great big thanks there, obviously.
Thank you, Sheila. And from the Kennybunk Portside Rotary, they donated two hundred and twenty dollars to general needs account.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? The United Way donated a hundred and fifty dollars to the emergency fuel account.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Madonna Chapter One Forty-four donated fifty dollars to the emergency food account.
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? And Kennybunk High School Wellness Committee donated a hundred and ninety to the emergency food account and a hundred and ninety to the emergency fuel account.
Wow, that's pretty awesome.
Yeah, terrific.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
You know, frankly, it was, the donations we receive periodically from members of the community and other organizations, it's, you just said it's one of your favorite parts. And it's, it's really cool to see, you know, that, that people make these kinds of donations and support their neighbors in this way. And I'm, I was both surprised and pretty excited to see the Kennybunk High School one there, too, because I don't know that I've seen that before.
Well, as I've always said to people, you know, when they find out that you live in Kennybunk Port, you know, this, like it or not, there's a certain stigma to that if you don't know the town and you don't know the people. And I always tell people, you know, it isn't the real estate, it isn't the beaches. I mean, those are all wonderful things. Don't get me wrong. But the thing that makes this town so special has always been its people. And its people have always been here to help each other. And I don't see that that, even though the town has changed in many ways, I don't see that that has changed. And that makes Kennybunk Port a very special place.
Absolutely.
Okay, other business. Pat, do you have anything for us?
Oh, I have nothing.
Okay. Stu?
Not for me, thanks.
Sheila?
Good.
And Laurie?
I'm going to ask Michael Claus to come up and give you a couple of updates.
I knew it was too good to be true.
I, I will be quick.
All right.
Quick construction update. We're out on North Street reclaiming the road this, this week. That'll take place today and tomorrow. Hopefully we'll get done. If not, it'll, it'll bleed over into Monday.
How far are you coming back? I see they chewed the road up to about the end of Beechwood.
Right, right to where we ended at Pattens.
At Pattens?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's a joint in the road there that we'll match into. So that, we hope to have base paved Tuesday, hopefully.
Wow, good. So it'll be like that all weekend, everyone?
Like that all weekend. We'll be out there maintaining.
It's good today.
The road is puffed up. When, when they reclaim it, the road gets puffed up. So it may look a little high at your dri, at people's driveways right now. But we'll come and take that material, the grader will windrow that material out, and we'll take that off to our shop, that excess off to our shop to be reused down on Mills Road later this year.
Great.
Also out on Wells District Road, the water district is out there, starting their project. They'll be doing the water main from about the fire station back towards town, a little bit on, about to Green Street. So we will be disrupting traffic there probably right through July.
Oh, joy.
Yeah.
Through when?
Doing, doing our part.
Three months.
Keeping, keeping speeds low.
We'll be going the long way.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Do you have anything else, Laurie?
I do not.
Okay. And I would just like to, again, thank the budget board for coming out. I know they're not here now, but I'd like to thank them again for coming out this evening. Well, David's here, yes.
It's well represented.
And, you know, and I'd like to thank them for their hard work that they do throughout the year. And it makes our job as the five of us a lot easier. And I'd also like to make a personal comment of how much more efficient the process has become in the last five or six years since I've sat on this board.
It's all you.
No, it's not me. No, no, it's the budget board. You know, I can, you remember the good old days? And I won't keep you all here all night talking about when people would come in and ask for the money. And we'd sit here and sit here and sit here. And, yes, absolutely. So I will be quiet now and ask to approve the treasurer's warrant.
Second.
Stu? All in favor? Yeah, Stu?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Good work tonight.
Are we offline?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, but we-
So you can't talk bad about me yet. Now, now you can. We're offline.